I'm calling to order the meeting of the Newburyport Public Schools School Committee for Monday, June 5th, 2017. Ms. Bannon, would you call on the call to the hall?
Sure.
Mr. Hocke, is that it?
Here.
So this is your order. Here.
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 This is President. We have a forum. Can we please stand and say that we're leaving this?
I would like to be the symbol of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. This brings us to our session of public comment. If there was anyone who would like to address the committee, could you please step forward, state your name and your address for the record, and try to keep your comments to two minutes or less? Is there any public comment at this time? Yes?
This is Eric Luft, 7 Tracy Street, and I didn't prepare formal remarks, so I just wanted to express support for the Starting Times Later Initiative that's going on. I think it's, in my view, it's going to be happening across the world anyway, so we might as well be leaders on the subject instead of followers.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Yes?
Hi, Annalise Grant, 11 Commerce Street, mother of a third grader and first grader. Also want to voice support for Later Start Times. I know there's been some back and forth about the logistics of it all. I think kids are only getting older and gonna need that time back as our little ones get older, and want to make sure that our support is expressed appropriately.
Anyone else? Yes?
Hi, Jay, I'm in 26 Summit Place. I'd like to thank everyone here who had worked on the task force regarding Later Start Times. It was definitely yeoman's work. I think we learned a lot. I certainly learned a lot. It's rare that you have an opportunity to positively impact 2,000 kids at once, and that's what this initiative does. A lot of the things that we look at as a district, I think, are for minor populations, and that can't be helped. It's the way that things roll. But positive vote tonight positively impacts the entire district, so I encourage everyone here to be supportive. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you very much. This brings us to our second agenda. Do we have warrants, Mr. Bannon?
Yes, warrants, three. I move that the following named bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate of $89,357.59 be approved and forwarded to the city auditorium for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
I move that the following named bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate of $14,321.31 be approved for the city auditorium to make payment and deduct the funds from the schools' account. There are no conflicts.
Second discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And then the final one. I move that the following named bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate of $294,799.05 be approved and forwarded to the city auditorium for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Please turn your attention to the Newburyport School Committee Business Meeting minutes for Monday, May 15th, 2017. Could I hear a motion, Selem?
Second.
Comments, corrections, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Our student rep isn't here this evening, so we're gonna move right on to Agenda Item Number Five, which is the Newburyport High School Student Handbook. We have two lovely gentlemen approaching us. Well, one's lovely. No, not one.
Hey, we'll take a compliment. I'll be checking. Jay, claim?
All right, I'll be closer.
So I had, I provided a handout before the meeting got started that has got a summary of the proposed language for two rules that currently exist, but we want to change some of the wording, as well as change what the disciplinary outcomes are. And the first one, I suspect, will generate some discussion, maybe more so than the second one. So the first rule that we feel needs to change is a policy at the high school regarding tobacco, smoking, and the phenomenon we've been experiencing the last several years, vaping. And then the second rule we're looking to change, at least in terms how we articulate what the discipline outcome is, is for when students park their private vehicles on school campus. Both policies, as they currently state, basically are fine-based, whether it's a smoking violation. That's the old language that we have not enforced. That doesn't happen when students are found with tobacco or vaping devices, cigarette chewing tobacco. I've never, in six years here, sought to enforce a fine or would even know the means to go about doing so. So it's antiquated language that, as you can see from the policy itself, goes back to 2001, 2002, and I presume that those were in the years where tobacco use of high school students was much more prevalent. And so never before have adolescent kids and high school kids been making better decisions about tobacco use. But now, the new thing that we've been experiencing over the last couple of years, really last year and this year in particular, is the electronic cigarettes and electronic vaping devices that is occurring in the building. It does. And we need to have some tools at our disposal for how we address it and how we enforce that it's not appropriate and not okay. So the proposal goes on to the back of that one-page handout in terms of what the outcomes would be. If students, I'm gonna just talk, I guess, in terms of vaping, because that is pretty much what we're dealing with, not so much cigarette or chewing tobacco. I think I've had one chewing tobacco incident in the last two years, maybe, and I think we've had 16 vaping incidents this year. So it is, to our experience, has been nicotine-based products that students are vaping, although we're wise to the fact that that's presumably not all. We do fear that it would become marijuana-based products as those become more available. But what we have experienced is students using an extract oil that's largely nicotine-based. So it is still a chemical health violation under the statutes and MIAA athletic standards. So students, if they are athletes, would have a 25% of their season chemical health violation for vaping. And then what we've been doing is kind of working around assigning kids' attention. So the new policy is gonna reflect a little bit of an educational-based component through a health at teacher. So if students are caught in possession of a vaping device or tobacco, that there'll be notification to any activities directors. So it's, any extracurricular activity would be penalized, not just athletics, but sports, as well as other extracurriculars. That's on strike one. Students will be sent home with their parents that day, dismissed. They will be required to attend an after-school health education course that will be taught by one of our licensed wellness staff. Some used to be referred to as like a smoking cessation course, which is not necessarily what we envisioned for next year. It'll be more in terms of the potential dangers of vaping and which is research that might not exist yet. And if students refuse to participate in that, that there'll be some form of discipline outcome for not participating. That'll be in the form of an extended detention.
I'd like to add one thing at this point, too. The Health Advisory Council took this up at their last meeting, and the Health Advisory Council is comprised of students and staff from across the district. And one of the things that we talked about was how prevalent this has become in terms of our students, not only at the high school, but also at the middle school, and that we feel that we really need to do a big public campaign to educate students and parents about the concerns around vaping and about the lack of information about what vaping actually can do. So that's one of the things that we talked about at the last meeting. So I would just want to make the school committee aware that that is something that, that in the fall, we plan to really hit pretty hard.
It's been, to that point, I would say, the single biggest disciplinary issue that we've experienced this year. It's pretty prevalent, and it's a problem. We want students to be comfortable to go into a restroom and not feel like they're gonna get bagged for just being there. Or we want students to, you know, know what's appropriate in and out of school, and it's not age-appropriate, and it's not healthy. And for whatever reason, it's being targeted towards that younger population, the packaging of it, the marketing of it. It's accessible, you can buy stuff on Amazon and have it shipped to a local shipping store and pick it up. So a lot of this is happening through mail order and through online. So it's a tough, tough fight to fight for us, because kids don't view it as dangerous. Life, they do tobacco.
Right. It's a safe alternative to smoking a cigarette. It's how it's being marketed. But it's also packaged to really target, you know, pre-teen to teenagers. It's packaged, in some cases, almost like gum.
So it's gonna be a big battle. It's not one that we're just gonna have a better policy that fits things at our disposal. I think from the last 10 years of advertisements and campaigns against tobacco, students realize that. They know if I smoke, it's dangerous to me, it's gonna cause health issues, long-term issues. They're not thinking that way in terms of vaping, even if they are cognizant of the fact that nicotine is bad.
We try to speak to every student that we have caught in the bathroom to find out what would it take for us to get you to stop doing this in school? And basically, what we're told is, until you bring it up to the level of a suspendable offense, we're probably gonna take our chances. And we play Russian roulette, you know, whack-a-mole. You ever seen it at a carnival? You know, we go to one bathroom for a couple days, they go to another one. We're watching the outside of bathroom doors with our cameras on the corner of our desktops during the day, see if we see, you know, three or four kids pile into a bathroom. We try to get up there as quickly as we possibly can. But it has been problematic for the entire year. It's, it's, when you, and I asked a student, you know, you know, this machine, what did it cost? $149, Mr. Parent.
Wow.
But he said, when you add up the cost of the oils and the cost of the device, it's cheaper than whatever the, how much it costs for a pack of cigarettes or a carton of cigarettes. And so they look at it as being a more cost-efficient method to get a nicotine high, if that's what they're doing. And we have no way of telling.
At the Health Advisory Council, one of the things that kids said to us was that it's a head rush. That's why the kids do it, they get a head rush.
And that's part of why we dismiss them to their parents. I have no sense of what the physical
And the language.
... outcome is or why they do it. And I gotta presume there's some kind of rush or buzz to it, or they probably wouldn't be doing it. It's not just a social experience of, you know, puffing on this vapor to make it look cool. That's part of it, but it's not, you know, two kids in a bathroom, it's not a big social event. It's not that. So it's, it's, we're at a difficult point for this one, so we're gonna need some help.
Well, I have a question. I'm looking at the language on your first violation. It says, "notification of all sports and activities directors." Well, when you said it, you talked about being excluded from sports. What did you say about that?
So it's not just athletics that went currently, or the proposed language, so that wording means activities would be activities directors?
This doesn't say it, though. It just says you're gonna notify them. It doesn't say that anything's gonna happen to the student.
Oh, that automatically, because it's a chemical health violation.
This is in the handbook now, so I'd like to see, you know, if parents are gonna be looking for this and knowing what the consequence is, I think you can spell it out.
Got it. That's, in my mind, when I see chemical health violation, then I think they will spell it out.
Is the expression "chemical health violation," does that mean
Yes.
So somewhere in the handbook, it explains what a chemical health violation is.
Yeah, so we can include it right there.
Oh, yes, yes.
So if people see it.
But I still think the clearer we are with this, so that you can
That's good.
Follow through on the consequences if somebody can't say, "I didn't know that."
Yeah.
So for clubs and activities, it's weak-spaced, but for athletics, it's percentage-of-contest based. And, but that's, that's good input, thanks. And it impacts other things, like national under-society, like leadership positions, student government, any type of club. We feel like sometimes students that are athletes feel like they're getting hit harder, and the more involved you are, clearly, there's more at-risk to lose as a penalty. But we wanna make sure it's on levels of co-curricular activities.
Oh, Mr. Bannon?
Yes. The school-run health education course, is that something that, is there a cost associated with that? Is that something that's part of the day of the health and wellness teachers or whoever is doing it?
The health and wellness teachers kind of volunteered to do this as part of
CSI.
That teacher's, you know, advisory, but also they're one hour a week where they have to do extra help. So she has kind of, you know, brought that into what she would like to do with that hour.
I would think minor curriculum expense that we can just find, but not in terms of staffing. That's where that came from. Amy was part of the health advisory board.
I don't know if we're, we must be, on some level, we must be tracking if we're getting repeat offenders in this.
I think we've had one
Yeah.
Student that has been caught more than once in the school.
I just wondered, what I was, the reason I was asking that question is I wanted to sort of look at whether or not we're assessing the impact of the education class on kids, whether there's a before and after, whether there's a later six-month, three-week, a month check-in.
I think that's part of what we will track in the future. We have nothing right now. Let's just basically call, you know, speak to the student, find out why, if you can. You know, what's, what's the attraction? And then we've made calls 16 times this year, parents, to please come up, come and pick up your child and take them home for the day. We don't count it as a suspension, per se, but they are not at school the rest of the day.
Okay. Dave, did you have a question?
Yeah, a couple things. On a semantic level, it says, "notification of all sports," which is, you mean all, to all sports? On a job, I, okay. I was gonna ask about the class offer, but in addition, is there curriculum, like, in the schools? And if it's a middle school problem, are we working on this at the Brezner, for example? Like, I know, you know, Declan came home from fourth grade terrified of cigarettes the other day, but I don't think he's heard of vaping.
Yeah.
So are we working on?
We are, and we are incorporating that now. Anytime that we talk about smoking, it incorporates electronic cigarettes and vaping and the newer ways of thinking about accessing tobacco or other products that you put into your lungs. So that is, but we're also, we are also, next year, we're also adding another layer to the middle school curriculum around trying to be proactive around all kinds of substances.
Great. Are we confiscating those $150 devices?
Turn them over to the parents, because they're privately-owned property, and in a lot of cases, the parents say, "I don't want that." It's good, we'll use it for educational purposes, so.
I was gonna tell you that.
Youth Services has borrowed some for display nights. We've used them at faculty meetings.
Parent Alliance, I've shown parents what they look like, because they really look like, in a lot of cases, a mini recorder you'd put on, you're recording a meeting. That's what they looked like to me the first time I saw one. And, you know, and, you know, knowing that, you know, you can actually charge them on your computer with a USB port. I mean, it's, you know, it's, it's really been eye-opening for us to kind of get brought into the fold about this, because this is all pretty much brand-new. But, you know, anywhere you go, you just have to travel six miles north of here, and there's a, there's a store that's, a huge store, that that's all, pretty much all they sell. And you see them across Massachusetts. They're everywhere.
Right. Yeah, I guess the last thing I was gonna ask about was the campaign you were talking about, like, how, are we talking about, like, actual marketing, like Nancy Reagan just say no kind of thing?
No. We're talking about, what we've talked about so far is we've talked about having parent education night, having a big kind of community campaign, tying into Newburyport Youth Services, having them be part of it as well, sending home information to parents, really trying to educate everyone about what vaping is and what it isn't. And, I mean, one of the things that's the scariest part for me is that there's no, there's, there hasn't been any research done on this. We don't know what kind of damage, you know, it's sort of like when people used to smoke, no one knew that it would cause cancer eventually. I mean, that's very troublesome and worrying, that that's the information that we don't have yet. So we at least want to make sure that parents know that this is something that's pretty prevalent. I mean, the survey that we did among our, the youth risk survey, 40% of our high school students?
Huge increase.
Huge increase in students
Over the last
Who have said they've participated in vaping.
And I guess I'm totally ignorant on this, but as far as statewide legislation or the Massachusetts School Committee Association, like, are people?
Everything you see is, you know, they want to raise the tobacco age to 21, but I don't know what they're talking. To me, right now, it's not a cigarette-tobacco issue that's out there for our youth. It's a, it's a vaping issue.
Right. Especially with the marketing, and that was kind of going away with Pamela Jo, like I thought, that, but they haven't lumped this in, or?
As far as I know, no. I think, again, this is such a new phenomenon that we're trying, we're playing catch-up, and so are the parents. Most of the parents that we have talked to, and we have met every single parent with their, with their child in a meeting before they went home, most parents have no idea or quite frankly were shocked. I can only think of one or two parents who were, yeah, I, I got shocked.
I'm thinking the one big difference is we're now smart enough to know that eventually we're gonna find out what this is doing, how this
Somewhere later, probably.
Right. So, I mean, that's, that's the one difference. I wonder if we could, I don't know, if we could act from a bigger level, and that's what it sounds like.
Yeah, I mean, I don't disagree with you. I certainly can at least talk with my own superintendent's group and see, because it, I mean, it can't just be happening in Newburyport, it's gotta be happening everywhere. It's, it's a huge problem. And part of it is that I think we will all, the adults, we're quite unaware. And, you know, it's knocked up on us.
And I wonder if, like, maybe the Chamber of Commerce and the government at least, and I know we're going towards legalization, not away from it, but I wonder if they would at least be a little bit more marketing savvy and keep them behind the counter kind of thing in town? So that our middle school, I mean, we can't stop high school kids from driving assault very, or Steve Ruppel, we can stop middle school kids from going to, you know, downtown and getting, if, maybe they would get on more of something, or more so, over vaping.
I think it's more the health department who would make that call, because they've done it with other things. For example, down, you know, I'm, I just think that, you know, as opposed to the chamber.
Yeah, with the school.
Right. Because you did that with bath salts, we went up to some of the, you know, the, yeah, there was the, that was, it was an ingestible.
Yep.
It was, you get really, really sick from this stuff.
I bet.
No, it's, it's a name for a synthetic type of high that you can get over the counter, and it can make you really crazy.
It's like something blue and, or worse.
You didn't hear about the case in Florida where it actually started eating a person as a result of doing these bath salts?
Nope.
Anyway, so we immediately went out and asked for voluntary compliance, comply with this, and, and all of the stores complied. So I think that that's another thing we could do, is, is to ask our health department to go out and, you know, or send letters to any of the retailers who've got these things in town. So the other piece that I think will be helpful is next Monday, we have the interviews. We have that Tower Foundation grant for $130,000 a year for three years to hire a regional prevention coordinator to work with youth services. And so this is really exciting, and I guess there's really skilled people who have stepped up to apply for this position, and I think this is one of those things that, since it is happening regionally, that we could, you know, work with the schools in terms of developing a campaign.
I guess one last question I found, but as far as, like, connecting this to the sports and activities, is there any thoughts on whether or not that further disengages kids? Or is there a way for coaches to keep, you know, I'm saying?
We expect kids to continue to work out with the team. The, the sports penalty is that they can't play in the contest, but they are expected to be a good team member, support their team, work out at practice. It's just the number of games they can't, wouldn't be eligible to play in. It's a little bit hard to say, how do you do that if it's a club? We've had some of those discussions. Do you, how do you encourage your club or extracurricular if they don't have games and contests? So that's a little harder to measure.
I guess it's, just a question, it's kind of a, I don't know how to answer it, but when kids are falling out of, you know, out of line, then we pull out whatever's drawing them into school and whatever's providing a mentor and a, sort of a group for them to be with?
Yeah, I'm confident in saying this, we have not had a student who has had a chemical health violation, at least this year, maybe in the last two previous years, quit the team because of the MIAA consequence. They, they stick with it. We talk to them about it, you know? Now's the time to, you know, show your teammates that you really care about them and continue to participate and that you'll get back on the field once you sort of, whatever the suspension number means, you know, means.
So you would like us to alter this policy, too?
I just had a question, a couple questions. So you've called it a chemical health violation, and I guess I just wanted to better understand how that compares with, say, a student getting caught with alcohol. Is it the same, same type of thing?
It'd be the same in terms of a MIAA percentage of your season, but it's not the same in terms of school discipline and kind of how, what
I guess that's what I'm trying to
Possession of drugs
Right.
Under the influence would be up to a five-day suspension
Right.
Or alcohol.
And I'm trying
In this case, no. But my concern in this is that the vaping could morph from nicotine into that realm.
Okay, so, I mean, I'm trying to get to this.
Yeah. I think it's more comparable than you catch a kid with a pack of cigarettes. That's kind of what we're talking about in modern-day terms, maybe.
Okay, so, so that's a little bit different than, and I don't have the Clipper Compass in front of me, but I do have a document from a number of years ago where I believe when you have a second offense, you refer, the students refer to some type of assessment. Is that correct?
If they so choose to take, take that on, they, they can have their penalty reduced if they go into a program, a certified program, and provide us with documentation. They can do that.
Okay. So would that be the same type of thing with this situation, or is it different?
I think
With the vaping?
Well, you can see, having that built into the strike one, you go to this course, and therefore the penalty is reduced. It's somewhat embedded.
So the course is like?
The course would be an alternative to a full-blown, it gives us
Right, nothing on their discipline.
To say, I can, they've got two columns to choose from, they can, so, but it is different than alcohol
Right.
Or a marijuana or other drug that we might have, that's, that's an automatic minimum of a five-day suspension.
Right.
And in many cases, we're talking the possibility of an expulsion here. We're not talking at that level with, with this.
Okay. So do you see this as, do you see this vaping as, in a response to treating the student to help protect the student from choosing to use substances in the, in the future? Do you see it as that? Or is it kind of different, because it's different than, say, drugs and alcohol?
It's hard, because, I mean, I don't think there's any, I would say, most, a lot of students have tried vaping, where I wouldn't say that necessarily about all other substances, but it just seems more accessible to them, they're not, there's anything wrong with it, so.
No, and
We don't have a lot of data, this is relatively new, too, so it's tough to say. From my experience, kids that vape are at risk of that, although
Yeah.
I kind of picture that.
Right. And I, I guess I'm just bringing this up because it just, to me, it just shows how challenging the whole problem is.
Yeah.
Because it's, it's very clear, drugs and alcohol's very clear, you've got some good policies in the Clipper Compass. This is kind of a middle, middle-of-the-road type of thing, where you have students basically saying to you, "Hey, not gonna bother me unless I get suspended," and it kind of puts us in a bad spot. Whereas what we really want to be trying to do is, again, helping the student, help protect the student from choosing to use substances.
From that point, I kind of have a feeling we might be revisiting whatever this policy ends up as this week or this month, a year from now, kicking it around again, saying, oh, it didn't work, it did work, or we need to tweak it, so. This is just a shot in the direction of what's at our disposal, saying you're gonna have a $100 fine, $125 fine, which we can't and don't enforce.
And Steve, honestly, I think, well, I think, I think we're all scrambling like everybody else to wrap our heads around this, because it's such a new phenomenon that, again, two years ago, we weren't dealing with this, but all of a sudden, it's, it's mushrooming.
Yeah, have, have always said, or I should say always, but in the last, I'd say, 12 or so years, we've had a stronger wellness component to our school here, is there a way to maybe enhance that for, again?
I know at the high school level, they've already embedded a vaping education piece within their curriculum, but that's, that's going to be evolving also, because we don't have the research, and we don't have the, the science behind this yet. The key word I keep reading in everything I read about it is that there's formaldehyde in, in most of the, of the liquids that the kids are vaping, and, you know, that, that's a red flag right there in and of itself, but really, I think it's going to be unfortunately another year or two before we, we come up with a comprehensive plan, and it's developed. Again, I think for most of society, and behind the times, and, again, we would have been too if, if this wasn't, you know, we were going like, what is this, what is this, what are these things, you know, and we had to do some really quick, on-your-feet research and just talking to kids and finding out, what's the attraction, where are you getting them, do your parents know, do you realize, you know, what these, these chemicals might do to you, and, and again, it's being marketed as a safe alternative to cigarettes.
And that's, I think that's the challenge here, is that we're, we're trying to keep our children, students, safe, but we're up against, you know, marketing of, you know, people trying to make profit on this, and, so I appreciate all you're doing, thanks.
Further, I, I'm sorry, Angela, did?
Yeah, um, you know what, I, I love, I know, I know how much you've been, how much time you've had to put into this, this year, and one of the things I'm wondering about is, I read this, I love the after-school health class, as, I kind of think it would be a great thing to have all the way through at every level of consequence, that every, you know, we really might, that might help us boost the education piece around it, and it's more than just disciplinary, it's also educational, and I don't know if you're able to consider that, because I just think anybody who's found in this situation should have to take the after-school class, whether you end up, you know, whether it's first offense, second offense, the class would have to be different each time, there was an offense, I imagine, but I just feel like that educational component is a really nice aspect of it, and, you know, I think it's important for the kids to see that, too, that it's more than just, for some, an out-of-school suspension may not be such a bad thing, you know, having to attend the after-school class.
I think it's a good alternative to start with at the, at the, at the base level. I think once we start catching a student with multiple offenses, then, you know, I don't know if, you know, putting them back in the education piece a second time is necessarily going to work, and they also have to agree to it, and, you know, we can't force them to go to, to the education piece. They have a choice here of doing it, I would, I would hope that they would, to avoid having a, you know, extended-day detention, but, you know, second offense, we're getting into the out-of-school suspension realm, which is something that goes on your, on your record that, you know, again, you know, I think we have to have levels of punishment based on, in this particular case, the, the number of violations that one student might, might, you know, accrue. Hopefully, again, you know, there are phenomenons that come and go, you know, I didn't know about fidgets until a couple of months ago, but I do now, so I think there are, there are things that come and go, but this one seems to be gaining some traction.
Chris?
Yeah, this is not as much of a digression as I think, think it is, but you know me, and you know that I'm a really good believer in certain natural consequences to behavior. We know, because these kids are telling us where they are getting this stuff, where they're getting the vaping equipment and materials, when you talk with them, are they saying, yeah, I get it at such and such a store in Seabrook?
Mostly mail.
Mostly mail.
Amazon.
Through Amazon and other online vendors. Is the predominant way for students to bypass the parents, have it shipped someplace other than their home, and they, and there they can pick it up? Now, I, I just read in a paper this weekend, Amazon is paying $130 million fine because they're, they were, you know, kids were ordering stuff on an Amazon app that they have no way, have no way to.
Sort of what I'm driving at is that, if, if I was, if I was at Amazon, and I got a letter sent from the superintendents, and, you know, we caught 16 kids who were telling us they're ordering this equipment through you, and they're minors, and we don't appreciate it, it's becoming a community issue when you deal with it, I would suspect that they might sort of wake up a little bit, especially if they're starting to get hit with fines. So, so there's, there's got to be, you know, I'm, I'm aware of the stores in Seabrook that you can get this stuff at, and, and I'm all in favor of letting them know that it's, it's a problem for selling to kids who are underage, and that we're aware of it, and that they're being ratted out by kids who are saying, this is where I'm getting this stuff.
But if they're ordering on Amazon, they're also using a credit card, so it's not bypassing their parents?
Our kids have their own debit accounts.
A lot of our kids have their own debit accounts.
It's still, it's still not, parents have to be involved in that process at some level.
Yes, they do.
I mean, when we start doing sort of more community education around vaping and stuff, that piece of it needs to be brought out.
Absolutely.
You need to really have a tighter rein on kids using credit cards and debit cards, to see what's going on.
Again, the, the most, the reaction we get mostly from parents is that of, you know, shock, had no idea.
May I ask again, this afternoon health education course, how many days would that be?
Well, I think it's going to be determined by the number of students that get caught, so I don't think we're going to, we're going to hold it on a, on a, on a need basis.
But it's a one-time?
Yeah.
Yeah, I see that as a one-time.
Oh, all right, okay, that's all I was asking.
So it's better to go that one time than go for after-school detention three times?
Right.
So I know you're looking for a vote, so we talked about, you're going to hopefully clean up that language about what that means, notification of, even if it's elsewhere in the handbook, I'd feel better if it was right here.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So, are we ready to take a vote on section 6.5?
Want to order?
Uh, yes.
So what we are voting on is language to be included in the handbook, this is not a policy until we add it into the policy, and we vote the opposite, like that. It's, this, I mean, I don't think there's any problem, I can get that included as part of our, between first and second read, but it's not there right now, I just wanted to make sure that people know that we're not voting on a policy yet.
So perhaps we should hold off till our next meeting?
Well, you can get this included with the changes that we've asked you for, and we, we put that to the next meeting.
The only caution I have here is that our handbook has to go to print before July in order for us to be guaranteed that we get it back for the start of school on, on the first day.
We'll take it up on the 19th, is that, okay?
Yeah, fine.
We do a first reading today, and then the, the second reading will be our, our meeting two weeks from now, because we have, most of the verbiage that's in the student handbook already that's been approved by the attorneys is also included in our policy manual, and that's what we're trying to get approved.
Okay.
So we want to make sure we don't put the horse before the cart.
Thank you.
Put the cart before the horse, I guess is what I'm interested in.
I also think that, I mean, I definitely think that this policy is going to, the policy itself, we're going to continue to update, because I think we're going to be learning more as we go through this, so I think that this is one that would be.
Pretty good what other schools are doing, that might be, but I really couldn't tell you. Some schools it might not be as much of a problem, and then others it could be very similar, so those are other things I'll start to, kind of learn about this next year.
This is a procedural thing, more than, more than conduct.
Thank you. Do you want to talk about the student parking on campus?
Real quick?
Yeah, real quick, just.
Currently, the handbook says that students, if the students, students are not allowed to park on campus during the school day, we just don't have the spaces for it, we don't have enough spaces for our staff. So, to that point, the consequence as currently articulated is that the vehicle will be towed at the owner's expense. We have a hard time doing that, like, it just like feels wrong, it feels really harsh, it's real expensive, it's pretty adversarial between the kid and the parent, and us, we do that. We actually made that phone call a couple of times, and what we found is that two local towing companies don't go there either. So, they're like, it's not worth the headaches, you know, like, how good, it's like, how clearly marked is it, where's your signage, are they numbered, or is it not numbered? And it's like, what we end up doing, pulling the kid out of class, or out of lunch, or whatever that might be, and saying, don't ever do it again, maybe an email to the parents, about, you know, this kid's got a little senioritis, or whatever it is, let's work with us, or maybe throw a detention at them, but it's not in the handbook that that, the consequence is, they get towed at their expense. So what we're looking to do is have students move the vehicle, and they be assigned to an extended-day detention, something that is within our local self-control, stuff that we handle, not a big deal, not a suspension, but something that kids really don't like as a consequence, and I would think that word would get around, that I had to go to three hours of detention because I didn't want to walk a block or two. So the hope is that would be a good deterrent. I mean, it's highly aggravating for a staff member to come in and find that there's a student parked in their spot, because we don't have enough spaces for our staff, so it is something we do need to enforce, but unfortunately, it is something that does happen, particularly come springtime. So, looking to do away with the towing expense, add in extended-day detention, not really a policy, just a.
Can you just, on the last sentence, it says, students who park on campus will be assigned to an extended-day detention, could you just include students who park on campus during these times?
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll clean that up.
I was probably like in my day, on school days, it's just a seven.
Oh, okay.
She writes in school days.
Yeah, well, when I'm here to enforce it.
Yeah, that's right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is a report on later start times. Is someone presenting?
Yes.
Mr. Men?
Leading the conversation. As you know, the superintendent pulled together a, an ad hoc group, working group, to take a look at both the benefits and the challenges of later start time. It cut across a pretty broad cross-section, I think, of the community, there were school staff, administrators, school committee members, people from the community, parents, and we explored both the research and, sort of the, you know, it ranged literally from sort of the more global, what is, what is the research saying, down to the nitty-gritty, what does this actually mean if we're moving this kid 15 minutes, or 30 minutes, or an hour later? And consensus, I think, was, it's fair to say, I think consensus was pretty hard-won among the group, we had a number of options, and drilled down essentially two options, and there is a recommendation that is coming out of the late start group, and I'll, I'll get to that shortly, to the school committee for some action tonight. I don't think that, there was a lot of debate about the efficacy of the research having to do with high school kids and middle school kids. There was a clear understanding that there are a range of benefits from the sort of the nitty-gritty that, you know, in many cases, test scores increase, and, you know, for kids that, that over late start time, that there's, that, that attendance is usually better, that there are fewer suspensions, to sort of some of the more broader and underlying benefits that we discovered, that anxiety, students report less anxiety, there's less incidents of depression, less incidents of mental health interventions, so, so it really became, how do we work out the challenges of making this happen? Knowing that, as, as Jay has said, that we would be taking a leadership role in this, that not, it isn't sweeping the community yet, it's not sweeping the state yet, although it's beginning to be addressed in the state legislature, it's beginning to be addressed in a number of state legislators, legislatures, California has actually just passed a statewide mandate to move to later start times. So, I think that there's a number of things that we need to do, and I think if we sort of sit around and wait for the state to take action on this, we can be waiting a while. We also know that we, we have some constraints in implementing this. One of the constraints has to do with some of the after-school activities at the high school level, particularly around sports. Another constraint has to do with finances for doing this, what would it cost us to do this? Essentially, the committee came down to two possible options. One was moving the start time 30 minutes late for all schools, for every one of the schools in the district, as a way to achieve a revenue neutrality to it. Ideally, I think that if, if the committee was handed a blank check, we would probably not have moved everybody, but we didn't really feel that at this point in time, the benefits of having a later start time for the middle school and the high school should wait until we get around to allocating funds to split the buses. The other option that we looked at and then ultimately dismissed was what was called the flip option, which would have been putting that, that, it would be revenue neutral in that, it would, it would continue to have the space between the bus runs, but it would have the elementary schools starting quite early in the morning, close to 7:00, 7:15 in the morning.
It wasn't?
What time was it?
I don't know, it was 7:45.
7:45, right, and there was a lot of feedback that that probably was not going to be the best option for kids. So, so essentially, the recommendation that we have to make tonight is that we would like the school committee to authorize the superintendent to set in motion a number of activities we think that will lead us to be able to make a determination, in November, a final determination about going to a late start time next September, September 2018. We, we recommended that, that there be a 30-day shift in the start times and the end times for all schools, so for those of you who don't have it in front of you, that means that for the Bresnahan, their arrival time would be 8:35 in the morning, the route start would be 8:05 in the morning, school would start at 8:50 in the morning, it would end at 3:20. For the Mullen, it would be an 8:05 route start, an 8:30 arrival, 8:40 school start, and 3:10 end. Middle school would be a 7:20 route start, a 7:45 arrival, and a 2:30 end, and the high school would be a 7:05 route start, 7:40 arrival, an 8 o'clock school start, and a 2:51 school end. The feedback that we had gotten from Kyle Hodgson, the athletic director, was that moving a half an hour was probably workable at this time, it could be done, he needs to talk to the other athletic directors, and some arrangements will be made, that there may be some impact on some of the sports, and that sort of gets to part of the caveats that we have with this recommendation. Part of the recommendation, the superintendent suggested this, and we strongly endorse, setting up immediately after this vote, if we should vote to, to move ahead with looking at this, setting up a working group in each school immediately to identify any of the issues that they feel that they need to address, and coming up with solutions for those issues, that purpose, they're, both of those are the purposes of that working group, not to figure out why it won't work, but to figure out what the issues are and how we're going to address them. That she also immediately instruct the athletic director to begin discussions with Kate Anne Reed, with athletic directors, both individually and collectively, to begin to adjust the schedule, to see what, what he can do about that, and report back to us. I think in terms of timeline, we know that we're locked into needing to make, needing to make a decision, a final decision before December 1st of next year, because of both the athletic schedule needs to get locked into place in December, and our preschool and kindergarten registration occurs.
Yeah, it's, it's really, I mean, what the, the email that I sent out to principals was for them to really be looking for, you know, whether it's now or in the fall, and really going through the very beginning of December, and coming so that by the middle of December, that we have recommendations from everyone, the school committee hears that, so that you can, you can make a decision based on the information that you have, knowing, I had kind of looked at the end of December as the, the sort of, the time where we absolutely have to have that information, for kindergarten, for sports, and also based on the fact that we had some of the members of the committee telling us that in terms of childcare, that parents were locking that in six or seven months in advance, so those were, those were three of the examples that I thought were really important. So, I think there's a little flexibility there, but December definitely, by the mid, midpoint in December.
So I think, I think what, what I would hope as a member of the, as a member of the working group, is that, that those committees get set up immediately and begin to really look at some of this stuff, that we get an interim report, I don't know if it would be the end of September, the beginning of October, about the work that groups are doing, and the strategies that they're coming up with, and then we then get a final report either at the end of November, or the very beginning of December, before we can take a final vote authorizing to go ahead with it. So, so, so in effect, the motion would be something to the effect of, of asking the superintendent to go ahead, organize these groups, and begin to set in motion a recommended late start of 30 minutes for all schools, and late finish 30 minutes of all schools.
Just to be completely transparent with the school committee, I did send out an email to the principals in anticipation. to the principals in anticipation, knowing that you were going to vote tonight and say that, and I asked the principals if they would be prepared to move forward, that if the school committee votes the affirmative tonight, that they needed to be prepared to put together those committees. So they at least have that information, so this will not come as a surprise to the principal side, just trying to be proactive.
And I would encourage, again, the commission to look at both the challenges and the solutions.
Yeah. Mr. DuKanter?
Hi. I'm very definitely, I'm excited about this approach, and I would like to throw a little monkey wrench into it. As I was going through the research, one of the things that I found was that there was painfully little amounts of research on the academic impact of these moves, lots of research on how it affects student move, lots of research on how it affects anxiety, lots of research on tardiness, but the actual academic impact was only one study that I was able to determine. It was a middle school in Minnesota or somewhere like that. Peer-reviewed, not anecdotal. There was another study that was put together by a think tank that was clearly an agenda that wasn't peer-reviewed, wasn't something independent. So the monkey wrench that I'm proposing to throw into this is, since we're in the business of reaching out, that we reach out to our partner universities, like occasional schools, and see if there might be some professor that might want to take a gander at using new report to actually study the academic impact. And the reason I'm suggesting that we need to do that now is because we want to get a baseline for people to build off of. So I think that could be another way in which we show leadership in this area and cement our better relations with the universities.
Mr. Hawke, is there?
Susan just sent this from this edition of the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents newsletter, a memo that included an article, research by the Brookings Institute, the title of which is "Starting High School Later for Better Academic Outcomes." So there is contemporary research.
Again, I need to take a look at that research. I've seen lots of research, it tends to be think tank type stuff. It's not peer-reviewed, it doesn't meet the standards that are required for academic programs, just letting you know, we just got it. So yeah, thank you. I will take a look at it.
I mean, I think our feeling is that the academic is really nice, the other benefits are so significant, documented, overwhelming that...
I agree with that person, that's why I opened my comments by saying I'm very excited about this process.
Mr. Miller, may I ask you a question about the sport schedule?
Sure.
And since the high school principal is still here, we knew that the student athletes, and this is, it stated very clearly which student athletes would need to be dismissed from class early and how many times per week. And then the teacher-coaches would also potentially need to miss pieces of their last periods. Mr. Parent, would that be part of your study this year to figure out how you would cover those classes? And I guess I'm not sure how much, how much class time would the students miss at the end of the day? Would it be a whole, the full half hour that we're moving?
I don't know the answer to that question, but I would think that there would be a few times where students may have to leave early, depending on the sport.
Well, it's in here and it's highlighted very clearly, but I don't know what the dismissal time would be, the dismissal time that the high school would have. When would the student athletes get, have to leave their last class?
It depends on where they're playing.
Where they're going to.
But is this only for away games?
Yeah.
Well, it is a...
Golf and cross-country could potentially have to dismiss for home events.
Especially later in the season. Especially later in the season. I don't think September is much, as much of an issue. Golf gets dismissed early now because of the type of sport that it is. That's always been an enameling, no matter what schedule you have, what time students are dismissed. I mean, you know, I've been in high schools where students were dismissed at 2:05 and the golf team got out early because, you know, they may have had an hour bus ride to get to away match. So, you know, I think, you know, the home team dictates pretty much the start time, so I don't think this is going to affect us at home competitions, except what Mike said. I think you're going to have two areas of concern that we have to really take a hard look at, and that is cross-country, especially once October hits, and golf. Those would be the two.
So would it cost you money to cover those classes with teacher-coaches gone?
It does now.
It does, yes.
Okay.
Under the current NTA contract, when a teacher covers another class, it would, there's a cost associated with that.
And that's how you do it?
Yes.
Mr. Miller, do you want to continue?
I, there are other questions. Again, you know, we're aware that sports is an issue at the high school, that it's going to need to challenge, and we need to look at that, and high school's going to need to look at that. But again, it's challenges and solutions that we really hope to get, because we really think that this would be in the best interest of certainly the high school and middle school students.
Any other schools, any member have questions?
I have a couple comments. I attended most of the meetings of the working group, and I think my, my only comment is that I'm not opposed to this suggested change at all. I think it was the best consensus we could come up with. One of the options that was looked at, which was a cost increase, was moving just the high school. And it cost, the estimated cost was around $200,000 for budgeting. And I think that although we could vote to move wherever this and address some of the issues that are listed in the proposal, I would like to not take that off the table. And the reasons why are, the elementary school's working really well at the time it's at right now. And in terms of, this doesn't address, that wouldn't address the middle school issues, but the middle school is looking at going to a 9-9 schedule, and so that might be something that could be addressed at that time. And I think in the grand scheme of things, $200,000, it's like less than 0.1% of the budget. And I think that cost, if you move the elementary school forward, it really does seem to shift it to, you know, parents of kids that are going to have to find childcare before school or after school. So I don't disagree with the proposed change, but I don't think we should take necessarily that other option off the table if somehow during all of these working groups we can mitigate that cost and...
There's one other point that I would like to make finally, and that is that we put together a pretty basic, simple survey of all parents in the school system to identify any challenges that this may present to them and any benefits they feel like they're going to get out of it. That, once we make, once we approve, the goal is to get that survey out by a variety of means, both by email and by community connect and in hard copy to all parents and compiled before the end of the school year, at least that information. So, you know, anything at this point, sort of conjecture, kind of impact that it might have, and that is going to be information, I think, that's going to help each of the schools as they begin to look at their challenges and solutions. So that's, once we, once we approve that over the next couple of days, we expect to get that survey out to everybody and begin compiling that data.
So what does that mean for Christine's comment? Maybe add more information?
It'll give us more information, we'll know what kind of an impact that may have given.
So it would stay on the table?
I think that, I think we need to, we need to find a way to move forward.
Understood, but I'm talking about this part of the study that's ongoing if we vote to do that. That's all I'm asking.
The proposal was written, clearly talks in a number of spots about the fact that the busing contract is out this year. And who knows what that's going to lead us to?
That's...
Right, so we could come up with, it could be $200,000 cheaper to have a different company, for all we know.
It's up to the end of next year, I just want to...
I'm saying that, right. So as we go through with the next year, we're going to be negotiating a new bus contract at some point. And so there's a lot of X-factors. The other thing is, you know, at some point, if everybody shifts either in the league or in the state, we might find ourselves needing to shift again based on, it might make sense. So, you know, the future is the future. What we're talking about is a proposal we have now, which I think represents not only a lot of good compromise on people's parts, but a lot of good opportunities to look into the things that people are presenting, what we need to look into. So that's that. I mean, and I guess the only question I have is whether or not at December, we had talked about Kyle, said he's going to monthly meetings with the athletic director. So I guess I'm curious, has this discussion already started there?
I don't know, I didn't have that particular conversation with him about, I mean, he and I have talked about this, but I don't, I didn't ask him directly what conversations he's had. So I certainly can do that.
At the time, he told us he was waiting to be directed to start having those conversations. So I don't know what that, what that meant, and I haven't...
Yeah.
No, I would say that that's, that's the understanding of this vote, that we're instructing the superintendent to come and start having these conversations. That's my feeling about it. If they haven't already happened...
Well, that's what you're asking, you haven't already started.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, I find it hard to believe that they haven't had some conversations.
I think every athletic director in the state is having conversations around this topic as our, as our superintendents. It varies from, at least the superintendents on the North Shore, when we've talked about it, there have really been three communities that have been talking about it. And it's been Masco, it's been Georgetown, and it's been New Report. The rest of the North Shore superintendents, it really has not been an issue in their communities at this point. California, they are proposing this for 2020. There are, you know, there's been talk at the state, at the Massachusetts State Legislature about this. I mean, this is not a topic that I think is going to go away, because there is a lot of research that says that this is good for kids. So I definitely think that we're headed in that direction. How we get there is, you know, there's a lot of pieces to this and a lot of variables, as I have been talking about. It's one of the reasons why I proposed that we needed to have individual committees at each building level, because I think it is very specific to each building level, there are different issues that are going to come up at each building level, and different problems to be solved at each building level. As well as, there certainly are conversations to be had with parents at each building level about how this will impact them. Clearly, it's going to impact parents at the elementary level versus parents at the high school level. So, you know, I think we have to have those conversations, and we need to get that data from the individual committees, and that has to come back to the school committee. As to your proposal, one thing that I would add, I would propose, I'd like to give a solid amount of time, I'd like to say that by our second meeting in October, and I think the school committee calendar is on the agenda for tonight, and I did look at this, but I'm thinking like the middle of October would be a great time to have the buildings come back and do a preliminary report to the school committee. And I'm looking, October 16th, so that to me would be, that would be the agenda item for that night, would be to have the buildings come and report at that time. So I think we can, we can fill that in right now.
And what would that include? The progress made towards the difficulties, what is still left?
What are the issues and how are they, how are they proposing to resolve them? What kind of feedback have they had? Have they surveyed? What have they done? And I think there's a, there's a whole host of data that come forward. It has to be. It has to, it's a compressed time. It's one of the reasons why, I mean, I think that they want to go back and be talking to their staffs before the end of this year. I think they want to get something out to parents before the end of this year, and so that everybody knows that they're jumping in on day one.
Well, I mean, this proposal has all the earmarks of a consensus proposal. Not everybody got what they wanted, it's not perfect, it's going to need to be tweaked, adjusted, wrote down, researched, and then reported out. But it is the recommendation that's coming forward from the group with an understanding that we, that in a lot of ways, it begins some of the real nitty-gritty work of making it happen. We've looked at the larger issues, we understand that things like busing and scheduling are going to be concerns, but, you know, we really felt that we needed to sort of, say, we're moving forward and trying to make this happen. That's the goal.
Mr. Cole?
Yeah, I'd just like to add that I also believe and support what Ms. Miller is saying about keeping the option to have preserved the start times for elementary schools. And I guess I'd also like to see if, in those surveys, you can try to quantify just how disruptive the schedules of working parents would be if the elementary school start times changed.
You get that information from the survey.
And then the last thing I'd like to add, the one thing that seemed to be missing from the task force, and it's not meant to be a criticism, but it's only comparing it with other tasks, later start task force reports I've read, is, I guess, the lack of a school psychologist. And I guess I would like, I don't know if it's a cadre or if it's a representative, it's who are school psychologists in a new school district, it would be helpful for, I believe, our school psychologists to provide just a report on the benefits of later school start times for the children and students of our school district.
Charlie, from the social-emotional standpoint?
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
Anything further from the committee? Did you have a question, Mr.? Could you please restate what you're recommending to us in voter language, mister?
Sure, let me see if I can pick a crack at it. I move we accept the recommendation of the late start working group to shift school starts 30 minutes later and end schools 30 minutes later, with the expectation that by the second meeting in October, we will have a report from the building committees about their work on the challenges and solutions.
Can you say preliminary report?
Preliminary report. On the challenges and solutions to implementing this.
Could I hear a motion? That was at the second?
That's a motion.
Second. Discussion.
Yeah.
I just would like to, again, thank the working group, members of the school committee. I know this was a long process, and a lot of frustration at times on the part of the parents with school committee, feeling that we weren't moving fast enough and, you know, sometimes we're moved slowly in schools and government, but I thank you for your patience, for your hard work, and the final result that you put before us in terms of making options. So thank you, I appreciate it.
Could we have a roll call, please, Mrs. Manning?
Sure. Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yeah.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. DuKanter?
Yes.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Sweeney?
Yes.
Mayor Holliday?
Yes.
Thank you, that was the unanimous vote. Congratulations. And... Sweeney, for all your hard work. And you're not off the hook because the study goes on, so, thank you. All right. Mr. DuKanter, we're going to quickly move on to section J.
Section J.
Well, no, we're moving to it quickly, we're not going to get through it quickly.
Okay, in the, because I wish it were just section J, but there's a little bit more to it as well.
Oh, surprise up his sleeve.
So the way in which we have passed the sections in the past, at the first reading, I basically tell the school committee what's included there, how we came to it, how this was put together. We don't actually sit and read through all of the documentation, because that's 93 pages, as the mayor has pointed out. And I think, I have it on good authority that all of us know how to read. So that will be your homework assignment. You can go through, if you choose not to do the whole thing, you can choose the areas that you're most interested in. I would recommend that you, I'll go into it as I talk about the different policies. So I want to begin with section J, and then there are a couple of additional policies that we need to bring into first reading as well, and one change to an existing policy that doesn't require two readings that we would like to have you consider. So bear with me as I go through this. Section J probably is the section of the policy manual that, to date, has been the most complex, most difficult and time-consuming, not to mention longest section, I think, that we've done. It was easier to redefine our own rules and regulations as a school committee than it was to do this. This is a section that deals with everything that has to do with regulations and policy around students. So it is key, it is the core of what we are all about, and so this is why we spend so much time on this. It goes really from... It goes really from talking about students' right to an education, talk about school age, who we allow in our schools, who are excluded from our schools, residency requirements, absences and excuses, students' rights and responsibilities, all the way down to the very nitty gritty of the whole discipline process within our schools. What rights do children, do our children have within a disciplinary system? Do they have a right to a disciplinary hearing? What is the nature of that stuff? So all of this is included in there. We also have two policies, which are, I think, very, are core to the emotional well-being of our kids, and that is the bullying policy and the hazing policy. We have information there about alcohol, tobacco, and drug use by students, and that it's prohibited, comments on pregnant students, student fundraising, student activity accounts, overnight trips. So it just is a very wide, wide set of policies that is included in here. It took us four sessions, four three-hour sessions to weed through it just to go and say, this doesn't apply, this applies, this needs to be adapted, et cetera. I would be remiss if I didn't take the, take a moment to thank Christina Gentili, Kathy Ricchio, our attorneys, Kyle, the principals, Angela, Kathy Manning, because everybody did a yeoman's work in getting information into us and proofreading and making sure that each of our policies not only meets what is required by law, but also covers our practices. These comments that Mr. Testa gave us today are going to be added in there between the first and second reading. But these are the kinds of comments. Today, I also got a new policy back from our attorney on attendance, which I've got to add in as well. So it's a living document, I notice, know that it's a living document, but I do want to get it into your hands and get as much of it approved, if we have to pull a couple of policies out of there, as we go forward, because we have questions about it, we can do it. But I think it's important that we get as much of it approved as possible, particularly the section on discipline, because that feeds into the Clipper Compass.
And I guess that was my question to you earlier today, so I'd just like to share that for a minute. Will the new Clipper Compass have, reflect this kind of language in any policy? So how do we get that to happen?
It's happened already.
Okay, so if we make any changes automatically, the Clipper Compass?
No, if we, if we make any, any changes, it will be made in that section, or in any other section that affect the Clipper Compass, because it could be a section on tobacco, it could be a couple of other sections. I will feedback to Mr. Testa to make sure that he has it.
And is vaping in this?
Vaping is in there.
Okay.
Not with the repercussions that were described here, but vaping absolutely is in there in a couple of places. It's in there in the discipline section, and it's also in there as one of the prohibited activities. Alcohol, tobacco, vaping, and controlled substances are all included in there.
I just want to make sure you've talked to each other, so that when it comes out, it's all the same and there's not.
That is our ultimate goal, and that's, that's what we have spent much of our time doing, is getting everybody back onto the same page and making sure that we're, we're in line with each other. So I'd emailed it to each, to everybody, I did not print out copies for anybody, but I'm sure if somebody wants a hard copy of it, we can get them a hard copy. I just didn't want to kill off too many trees before we kill off all the trees again.
If anyone needs one?
Okay, thank you. So with that, I would like to make a motion from the policy committee that the committee accepts the first reading, section J of our policy manual.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Wait a minute. No, 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 we can't go there yet.
Okay.
I have lots of, I have questions. I have started my notes. I appreciate the first upfront school choice, you know, that there's a lot of really residency requirements, I mean, really, it's clear, it's really good work. I get a little concerned as we move into more of disciplining conduct areas. I see a lot of redundancy. I don't know why these can't be put into one policy. You know, you have in one section, you'll have something, I have 34 redundant, and that's, you know, there just seems to be places where things are related to discipline that should be, like, you talk about that, or you talk about cheating, or you talk about, you know, disciplinary action, and there's, it's in the last section, and then there's an other section. I'm also concerned, because I can't tell, it seems when you get into, like, say, section 21 in conduct, you're talking about only the high school. Why is it only the high school? Then some language, it's very clear that it's to the high school, and then you read the next one, who is this applied to? So I'm confused about that, in terms of who is this applying to the entire school or just to the high school? We typically are responsible for approving the student handbook, I thought.
Yes, we are.
It doesn't say that. It says that the school council, it says that the, the school council will review the student handbook. It says nothing about it being approved by the school committee in there.
What policy is that on the page?
Page 19Q.
Student discipline.
Unless I was reading it too quickly, but I swear I didn't see it there.
Yeah, no, you're, you're probably right. I know we changed that, I know we changed that in a different policy elsewhere, to read the school committee back.
Well, I don't know why we have to have the same policies in many places. It gets too confusing to try and keep track of them all.
And that is one of the biggest challenges that I think we have, is when we're, as we're going through these and we're going through them, policy by policy by policy, and trying to make sure that it's matching our practices.
I'm also, okay.
Cutting out that redundancy is, we just stepped away from it, so.
For example, I'm very disappointed that there's not a mention in discipline of restorative justice at all. We've talked about that a lot, we moved it forward, we, you know, really, Bruce mentioned it again tonight, and the words aren't even there anywhere. That should be in the discipline policy somewhere. I have real issues with the fact that a kid who doesn't cite an internet or doesn't cite an author under intentional cheating, or it's cheating, and, you know, that's...
That is covered in glorious detail in the acceptable use policy. And so when you get into these kinds of things, there's a disciplinary effect, and then there's a...
But it needs to be consistent, and I just...
I agree, and I think it is consistent, but it's based in different places. And I guess part of it is defining what the issue is and what our policy is about internet use and how it's to be used. Another is, as an example of disciplinary actions that might be taken. I will say this, and you're probably absolutely right, I don't think the committee took as much time on the discipline as we probably should have. And one of the main reasons that I think we, we approached it that way is because when it was presented to us, it was, you know what, this is what's been approved by the lawyers, we've gone through the lawyers, and, and if you notice, the file reads like a legal document where the rest is very simple.
And it's fine, except for I just think that there shouldn't be...
Restorative justice is in there. We actually discussed it, I just remembered that we discussed it.
So it is in there somewhere, I just missed it, okay.
Yes, it just, it says, alternative consequences may include the use of evidence-based strategies and programs such as mediation, conflict resolution, restorative justice.
Where is that written?
It's the third paragraph down.
In which? Page 20, okay, thank you. I was, you know, trying to read through 93 pages really quickly this afternoon. I'm so glad to hear that, okay. So how do you want us to give you feedback, or?
Send me an email with what you have, and what you're, what you're discovering. If you want to do red line, that's fine. If you want to just pull out the bullets of what you need changed, just give me page number and tell me what it is you'd like changed. I will produce a single red line for everybody to see, as well as a completed way that it's supposed to be policy for two weeks from now, and that's what we will vote on for a second reading.
Okay. You don't feel you need to bring the committee back together to make those decisions?
Depends on which decisions, and that's why I said some of them we might need to pull out.
Okay, thanks. Just wanted to make sure that was on.
I mean, wait, we, did we set the June date?
Not yet.
I don't think we did. Everybody ran out of the meeting, we were running late, so.
And on, in some, depending upon how it printed out for you, it could be on page 19 and not page 20. But I, it is the third paragraph.
Okay, thanks. But just things like travel bans are prohibited overnight. We just got approved a trip for kids to, it never says in the policy that the school committee has to approve overnight trips.
There is a, a policy that requires us to approve overnight trips.
I know, but shouldn't it be consistent in here too? This is what's concerning me.
Yeah, I see. Yeah, all right.
And I just had one other question, because I just wanted to be sure, because this was a big issue several years ago. Please tell me we are using, I think it's called Impact, is the pre-sport?
Yes.
Computer program to set baseline?
And that's in the concussion policy?
It was, but I just wanted to be sure, because we hadn't talked about it during budget. It was cut out behind our backs several years ago, the budget, and we had some problems with kids with concussions, and I just wanted to be absolutely sure.
Baseline is, it's, it's a requirement to get the baseline, and Impact is in there, yes.
Okay.
So yes, please send your comments to us, and we will, we'll move ahead.
But thank you, this is amazing amount of work, it is amazing, amazing amount of work.
One other comment that I would make is that, one of the things that we really want to do is to actually get down to that fine level of detail, to catch the things that are inconsistent, because you work on a section of policy, and you focus on that section of policy, we don't always see... Interact, and where they intersect with one another, so that becomes important. As, as we do more work here, we'll, we're going to catch those things, but I agree with you, I think that that's what we want to get to. I mean, if, if, you recall, when I first came here, it was like, what do you mean, there's not a policy of anything? You know, we need to, policy is like the, what, the major work of what the school committee does. So, I mean, we've made a huge, huge...
The work is incredible.
Leaps and bounds, and, and I, you know, I'm feeling confident that we're going to end up with a policy book that the school committee can be proud of, that the administrators can be proud to administer, and that parents can, can easily understand. So, I mean, it's going to be a win and a lose all the way around, but it's, it's a process, it's a process. So I think the more that we can refine it, the better that we are, the stronger that we are as a school district.
So I'm going to build on that, it's a process, by saying, okay, we have two policies which are not fitting our process right now, because this is a section that we would not get to quite yet, we haven't gotten to yet, but it is policies that are required for the DESE, so I want to bring these up for first reading as well. This is a policy from the curriculum instruction area on English language learners, and a policy from the curriculum instruction area on the school year of school calendar. So if I have to just take one and pass it down, if you can consider those as part of the first reading submission as well, to be brought back to the school committee for second reading, next, next meeting. I emailed those to you as well this afternoon, so you should have them all. There are others that are required, but most of them are already within section J, so if we cover section J, we'll cover, and these two will cover our requirements.
Can I just ask a question about, talk about a quick one here? I had mentioned it to Susan that I would, I would like to see our students, particularly at the high school level, who are participating in things like Gomi and real world design, and to receive some credit for that. How do we do that? Talked about that before. Let's do, let's get it done. Why can't we do that for work?
Well, I think, you know, like, the real world design challenge is a course. They are receiving.
They are.
They're in a class, and they're receiving credit for the class. So some of those things are a class, and, you know, like, the, everything that happens in seventh grade that is place-based education is part of their science course. The Gomi team that's in Newburyport is outside of school, it's an extracurricular thing that happens. So our students can earn surface learning credits for being a part of the Gomi team, because they're giving to the community.
Those extra courses, academic courses that potentially could be credit-based, or there are academically-based programs that are receiving community service. I just think it'd be nice to know that, have that documented, and it just seemed as we were talking policy was good, appropriate, to bring that up.
We will bring it up again, probably, I don't, we haven't decided whether we're going to attack section G or section I next. G is employees and all of the, the school district is an employer, and I is curriculum instruction, so all are very important.
Do you go all the way to Z?
No.
No, thank God.
Just checking.
Because when we're done, we have to start all over again and try to catch more of the things that the mayor has been talking about. So what I do have...
Motion to approve English language learners.
We have another motion on the floor.
I thought it was for that, no?
Don't we have another motion on the floor?
Oh, we do, I'm sorry, yes, for the...
Just to approve the first reading.
For the section J.
That's what I was saying before.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So that was our discussion. It's already been seconded. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Now we have the next two policies, the mayor was just...
Motion to approve policy on English language learners and the school calendar.
Second.
First reading.
First reading.
Discussion.
On the back where it talks about, oh, sorry.
No, it's fine, discussion now.
Yep, yeah, she's raising my hand.
Oh, I missed it. Mr. Hawkeizer?
Thanks. On the back where it talks about the number of hours per each school, it says elementary school and secondary schools, that will lead somebody to believe that our middle school and high school are doing 990, which they aren't. So I don't know if you want to clarify which school.
I don't, well, right now, this is one of the issues that we're facing, and if this is, I don't know whether we want to write it into policy now or eventually write it into policy. Middle schools by state can go either way. By state regulations, right now, we're at 900, and we've had conversations with the superintendent that has suggested that it might be time to take a look at how we can get to 990 at the middle school, especially if we try to bring in more content like foreign languages and stuff like that. So what I'm suggesting is that there's a number three that says middle schools can choose whether to identify as elementary or secondary school, or whether as an elementary or secondary school. Currently, the non-middle school operates at 900 hours.
I would just like to point out to the school committee that Mrs. Manning, and doing a little bit of research here, we asked the State Department if they could provide us with data regarding how many middle schools were at 900 or were at 990, and believe it or not, the State Department does not keep that data.
We have no idea.
Correct?
Certainly shocked.
We do not keep that data.
Yeah, we had to submit that information to the State Department.
Do we know, do we know about the, like, the region, or the KBN League, or whoever else, like, who we're involved in, like?
I mean, that, that...
About Haysberry, do we know Haysberry?
Haysberry, I think, is a fine name, because I think they follow middle school, high school policy.
Haysberry has a really interesting schedule, in that they...
Do we even have a, a group of like schools that we use as comparative data?
We do.
And what do we call them?
Well, we have our, we have three levels. We have regional, we have comparative schools, and then we also have a list of aspiring schools.
And is that a group that's designated by the state, or did we come up with?
No, we first came up with it, but then, then the state determined comparable schools, and we moved to our comparables, comparative schools from the state.
Couldn't we maybe find out what they're doing?
And we can find out from our network.
How many schools is that group, like, consists of?
When they compare, like, state data, they compare it with five districts. They take five other districts that have like demographics, and, right, right. And then we usually look at regional as well. We look at the other schools that are in our North Shore region, when we, when we're doing, when we're gathering information like that. But both of us, you know, belong to networks, Susan, superintendent's, and I, assistant superintendent's, so we can just send a note out to and ask our networks.
And so, Mr. DeCantor, did you make any changes on this English language learner page?
Did we make this, any changes to the English language?
Did you want us to fast, fast practice for this evening?
No.
Oh, I thought you did.
No, I'm adding it to the list of first readings for...
For the next, the 19th? Oh, all right, I understand, thank you.
Because it's, it's an early, it's an early read, because we haven't done section I yet.
Can I just, can I just comment on this as well? Can I, can I just, can I just comment on this as well? So, in preparation for the comprehensive program review, we don't know exactly when they are coming, but we know the policies that we need to have in place. So, that's the, that's the reason why we're bringing some policies out of order forward to you, because, you know, and Angela knows this better than I do, because I haven't been through a comprehensive program review before, but they will let us know in the fall when they're coming, correct?
They will, and we've already, we, we submitted, um, our paperwork already, but we can add additions, so we submitted a draft, state policies that we hadn't, had read.
Including this?
Including this, so we submitted the draft, so they at least have a draft, but by the time they come, they'll expect to see that that...
It's been approved.
It's been approved, yeah.
Right.
Okay. So, did we get, did we get a vote on that? Yes, we did, right?
No.
Not this one, no.
No, we have a motion in a second.
I, we were, I was just asking a question whether there are any changes that we should be aware of before, because I didn't notice any of them on the, the paper.
No.
Any further discussion? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Sorry, you may ask later.
Okay. Finally, I have something which I'm excited to say because for once, it's not a policy that is being rewritten, it's a policy that already exists and is approved, uh, which we tweaked and approved and worked on several times already, and that is the community use of school facilities policy. Kyle came to us with some recommendations based on his experience, um, and it affects nothing more than the way we charge fees for the, uh, use of the facilities. Up to this point, we have a per user fee, somewhere around twenty dollars or so, uh, and if a, the Newburyport Youth Soccer, for example, uses the field seventeen times during the season, they will pay that twenty dollar fee per member of the Newburyport Youth Soccer Association once. This is not consistent with the way, uh, fields are normally rented, and it's not, uh, it's not fair because there are some, uh, organizations that get a lot more use out of our fields for their twenty bucks than others. Uh, there have been rumblings about that, not necessarily complaints, but rumblings, and so he set out to try and come up with a way that would be fair and would be just, uh, justifiable, which is what I am passing around right now. So, this recommendation says, let's go to a, let's forget about the number of users and let's go straight into a fee structure that is based on time used. So, um, this is a per hour structure. Uh, he has five groups across the top of this page, I'll wait until, until Mr. Menon gets a copy of it, and I have, I'm looking at the digital one. So, he has five groups across the top. Obviously, Newburyport Public Schools, Clubs, Teams, and Organizations, there's no, no charge there. There's the Group Two is Newburyport School-related Organizations, P T Os, boosters, et cetera, also a no-charge area. Group Three, Newburyport-based Youth Approved Teams, such as Bay Group, Little League, uh, Boys and Girls Basketball Associations, Youth Lacrosse, Youth Soccer, Youth Football. All of those have a, um, cost of about ten dollars per hour for the gymnasium, ten dollars per hour on the grass field, twenty dollars per hour on the turf field. There's turf field for camps and clinics, there's turf fields for special events, uh, which also comes into the possibility of what is in there. Uh, and there's, uh, the next section goes into nonprofit with group of status, and finally, individuals, non-Newburyport Organizations and Groups, all for profit, individuals and organizations. So, we follow the, the, the same kind of, of structure for setting the fees, but it is now based on a per hour basis in a way that is much more controllable, much more measurable. We have no way of knowing when the Newburyport Youth Soccer Association comes to us and says, you know, we've got a hundred and twenty-three kids, we don't know whether it's a hundred and fifty-three. There, there's just no way of us determining or, or, or measuring that. But we can measure and determine how this, uh, the, the number of hours that each organization uses the fields. So, uh, he is going into negotiations with some of these organizations right now, and that's why he's asked that we, uh, move through, that it requires only a, it requires, it doesn't require two readings, because it's, we are, as a school committee, allowed to set our fees, and in fact, we're charged with setting fees, and that is a, uh, a non-policy issue, it's included and attached to the policy, which is not changing. All of the rules about, about smoking and no alcohol and, uh, clean use, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, stay in the, in the, in the policy as written. Uh, how will this affect the current organizations? Some will be favorably, uh, affected, some will be negatively affected. He has already talked conceptually with all of the organizations, uh, and, uh, they seem to be agreeing, uh, Steve, do you want to pass this down?
Sure.
Uh, it seemed to be agreeing that this is a, a good thing. We figure that this will actually have a positive cash flow impact for the schools of somewhere between five and seven thousand dollars. That's not the reason we're doing it, it's just a way of being more organized about our fee structure, and, uh, we have the added benefit that, uh, that goes through it.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Um, I'm looking at the page that has the groups across the top.
Yep.
And Group Two, it, it looks like Newburyport Youth Services is a question mark, is that, am I reading that incorrect?
Yeah, that shouldn't be a question mark, I, I think that is considered one of the approved city groups.
Well, that's what I'm asking, it looks like it's a question, and I, it seems like it belongs there, I...
Yeah, but it does, it does belong there, but the question mark does not belong there. I would agree with dropping the question.
Alright, thank you, and then put them in the parentheses?
Yes.
Thank you.
There is, um, where is, where it's required, we do have the custodial costs in there as well, at forty dollars an hour, um, and those are built separately and paid separately. Uh, this is a structure that Kyle worked with Lisa Reed on, so she is very definitely aware of and is comfortable with where that's come out for the, uh, athletic fields that are actually, uh, reserved through the park system. So, that, that is also consistent. And so, uh, getting back to the impact on the different, uh, sports, uh, youth soccer is, basically breaks even. Uh, youth football, we would see an increase from, uh, youth basketball, because they are so hour-intensive, we would see go up as well. Uh, youth lacrosse saves money, and youth baseball, uh, would also go up, um, in the cost per hour, per kid.
How the youth teams, can you guys break down?
What's that?
How the youth teams, like, has youth football seen?
They have heard about this conceptual, conceptually, they have not seen this breakdown. This breakdown is really more for, for your information, um, and, uh, I know that Kyle will be approaching all the, the, the teams, uh, and, you know, I, I think it's a structure, it's a good structure, if, uh, Kyle comes back to us and says, hey, I need to negotiate a little with one of these, uh, organizations, I think, we would shake up on a case-by-case basis.
I'm just thinking about, like, I'm registering my kids right now, how are they gonna make up that? It's a pretty big chunk for some of the teams, you know, are they gonna have...
I, 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 I think you're right, and that, and that's why I'm saying, you know, let's set the policy and then we can talk about, on a case-by-case basis, if there are exceptions that need to be made for a period of time, or tweet. Again, fees can be changed by the school committee at any time with a, with a fifty percent bump.
Mr. Hockeiser?
So, I see a, a note here about the turf replacement fund.
Yep.
Is there a field replacement fund somewhere?
Yes, you have field maintenance funds, you see down at the bottom, field, fees go to conservancy, you have field maintenance.
Okay, so, if there, if there are those costs already built in, I guess my question is, do we still need to be raising an extra seven thousand dollars?
Absolutely.
Those fees, those, those, we're not raising an extra seven thousand dollars, that's, I mean, well, that's not what we're setting out to do. And that figure may well be high because, you know, I wouldn't be surprised if some of these organizations might say, you know what, we don't need to do full-court basketball practice, we'll do two half-court basketball practices because of the age of the kids, where it's appropriate, I don't know.
No, I'm just asking...
This is the kind of thing that they might be asking themselves to do as well.
I'm asking, if, if the maintenance field, if the maintenance fee and the replacement fee are already built into the cost, I guess what is, what is the additional money?
What additional?
Well, it says the difference is...
That's how much more that change is going to pay?
Based on the new fee structure?
That's, yes.
So, we're gonna be putting all of this extra into, I guess I'm trying to figure out why we're raising that much extra money here?
The field needs so much.
So, that's what I'm saying, so we don't have, we currently don't have any...
We have nothing.
We don't have enough to, to, to fund that.
There was this very strange, uh, account, nonprofit group that had a bank account from, that was collecting from some funds, at like twenty bucks a kid per team, that was at some account in Boston, but nobody was really collecting it. We found out about this when these came on board as, and we began working with Kyle. We brought that, that account back into the city so that we're keeping it, but, I mean, it just, the track has to be finished.
Yeah, no, I, I get all that, I'm just, I'm just trying to wrap my head around, like, if we need money to maintain the field, which I'm fully for.
Right.
There was a, so, I'm fully for that, I'm not, I'm not against any of this, I'm just trying to figure out, like, youth baseball is gonna triple their costs.
And we've got, if you take a look at what the, the condition of the fields that we used to offer before, they had a prior cost, and what we are offering now, we want to keep those fields the way they are now, and that's why we need to raise the maintenance cost on these things, this is part of what we're, what we're saying. This is to show impact, not to raise additional money, impact on the organization's debt, and, uh, all of this money is going to those respective funds because it is needed in those respective funds, and otherwise, I mean, Kyle has been in the business of seeing how much we can get out.
No, I'm just trying to figure out, so, so I guess ultimately, we've figured out what it, what's gonna cost us to both maintain and preserve the fields, and then we're divvying that up in the per hour structure.
Well, yeah, we're moving from a per, per, per kid to a per hour. And ultimately, the hardest part about the, about this was that, um, one of the, the complaints we had from the different leagues was, was our previous fee structure was very difficult to plan with, and it made it hard for us to do any kind of planning with, and so now going on a per hour basis, they know what their schedule is, it's much more defined across the board, and everybody can do a better plan.
It's based on usage.
It's based on usage, yeah.
Not a number of decimals.
Alright, so you say you're going from a cost, you're going from cost per participant to cost per hour, correct?
Yes.
Alright, just help me understand this. So, why do you have cost per participant on the far right? Shouldn't, you're going from, alright, yeah, why, why is it, I, 'cause I don't...
Ninety participants would be paying twenty dollars per participant, that would raise eighteen hundred dollars.
Gotcha, and, and, you know...
They're using it for a hundred and sixty-eight hours.
Right.
And then...
So, you're actually going, that's the only one you're taking a loss on, so to speak?
Lacrosse as well.
Lacrosse.
And there, both, those fields are the...
Yeah, okay, gotcha, yeah.
The grass fields, which are not nearly as expensive as the others to maintain.
Okay, so, so in fact, this, this is what I'm getting at, so in fact, going from a cost per participant, in some cases, is gonna get you less than the cost per hour?
Yes.
Okay. So, wouldn't you want that to be equal across the board, instead of basically certain sports getting, paying more?
They use it more hours.
They use it more hours?
Okay, alright, I'm just, I'm just trying to, okay, alright, I see the hours, yep, okay, alright, okay. So, the highest use, is it only ninety, ninety participants in youth soccer?
No, that, that is incorrect.
That's definitely incorrect.
So, then, we need to fix that, 'cause that sticks right out at me, 'cause I...
I agree, I agree, it's...
I drive around and say, I need to help a lot more, like, youth soccer.
Yeah, no, I agree with you completely, I've got a feeling it's probably closer to nine hundred, it seems like it anyhow.
That's zero off.
That might reflect the size of the, like, piece of youth soccer that uses, uses the town.
Specific venue.
Like, most of youth soccer uses their own fields.
Yeah, that's a good point.
So, it might, it might, it's, it's, between Cherry Hill and Cashford, there's a lot of youth soccer left that uses the school fields.
Okay.
What about basketball, have we maintained the courts? Like, is there a court, like, are the...
Gym, it's, it's up there, I mean, on the list, it's called the Gym Field Maintenance Fund.
Oh, Gym Field, got it, thank you.
And I, I just, I'm, I just really wanna comment that Kyle, in, in working with the Parks Department, it's been really a great working relationship, like, I, I think we have, the fields are really being maintained, it's all worked really well, so the partnership that's been formed there has been very positive. I just commented to the mayor just this last week about how, how positive that's been.
And there's still some, you know, growing pains, you know, in terms of, you know, there was, I guess, some miscommunication regarding, um, lacrosse and some of the backfield at Fuller, which didn't get mowed in time for a bunch of games this weekend, and, you know, it was just...
I can just on Facebook.
I'll always say, I think the Parks Department was awesome, but their response, I mean, I know they didn't get out there, but they very publicly gave a, you know, very, you know, people took that stride.
And it, it happens, I mean, it's just been incredibly busy, and it's been rainy, so it's been really hard to get everything ready, and, you know, we took some much-needed time off, and, you know, she's, what usually is the one when something like that happens, she goes and trails the mower over and will mow it herself, you know, when she gets a call like that, but she was off, so...
So, uh, the recommendation that needs to change, I'm sorry.
Sorry, can I ask one more question? Uh, can I say that the use of the turf field doesn't include the announcement of, that the...
Anything electrical, if you're using the lights, if you're using custodian, all of that is charted separately.
Okay.
And it's in the, and it's in the policy.
The lights are.
The lights are, and usually we don't want, we don't have it. The sound system goes under the same structure that we would use for the sound system in the theater, that you're required to have a technician on, a student technician on duty to set it up and actually man it, and there's a whole bunch of other things that are in there. We don't just, we don't just set up a microphone and say, have at it.
And what is the cost of that per game, of per venue, I think that's...
It's a per hour, it's a per hour basis, and I don't know what the, what the, what the cost is, but I think it's, it's somewhere around fifteen, twenty bucks an hour, something that's not expensive.
But it is a cost, and I agree with her, I think I'd like to see it on here.
I can, I can certainly ask Kyle to add that into...
Just to get a complete picture, fuller picture?
Yeah.
And so, sorry, this thing about sitting in the auditorium, it says at the top, so
if a group, if a town's group in the town wants to rent the auditorium, it's a thousand dollars to do that, right off the bat?
Yep.
And that's in line with what other?
That's a regional, yeah, oh, absolutely.
Okay, I, I just, 'cause like, my son does theater in Newburyport, they keep renting out in Tuckett's Gym, uh, auditorium to go do their plays, and I've always wondered why.
We had a, I forget how many, it was just before the senior, the senior assembly, we had a joint group of city councils, school committee members, that all got together to talk about field costs, or, you know, venues.
Field, crosswalk, city by field.
City by fee, so, that's pretty much all that embedded out.
Great. Uh, the reason that they might be over-tried and could be, is not that the, you know, they've got a tried and teacher who's heavily involved in this group, but they're all Newburyport people, well, I'm just, just letting you know.
Okay.
And I was just curious if it was...
Well, I don't have the answer, at least.
Well, you do, you said it was all better than all terrible, so that makes sense to me.
Any further questions? Mrs. Manning, will you remind me where we are in this?
We don't have, we, we need to make a motion in a second.
We were on the...
I thought we were on the discussion piece.
Um, I don't think there's any motion on this.
There's no motion. There's no motion.
I... I'm voting to approve the fee structure for our school facilities and athletic facilities.
Second.
Discussion? We should have done that before. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, I'll be very happy. If anybody wants a copy of the policies, I've got those hard copies here.
Thank you, Nick, Senator Ramirez, and Superintendent Dennis' report. School committee meeting calendar. I'm sorry, I already crossed it off. Draft school committee meeting calendar, first reading for 2017, 2018. Well...
It's a first reading, okay, second.
May I ask how we arrived at the date for the summer retreat? Because it's during Yankee homecoming week, and I thought you wanted to stay away from that, Mary. And that's why I suggested that the week after that, which is before Nick has his surgery, but this is...
Which would be the 11th, you recommended?
Well, I don't know, you going away that week? I, I just, you don't want to be Yankee homecoming, do you? Does it matter?
Well, that's to me, because I expect to be away that week.
Okay, so, but, we were, and I'm not, we were asked to submit dates, and as far as I know, only one of us did that, so that's why I'm asking how we, we got this date.
Let's ask, can we do the 11th?
Can we do the 11th?
Friday, the 11th, can we do that?
Yeah.
Is that okay with you?
Yeah.
Christine?
Hello, August.
August 11th.
David? So, can we move that?
Sorry about that, but I just thought, and we had talked about that too, so, thank you.
The only other thing is, I just wanted to point out that on Tuesday, February 2nd, that's inauguration, and that it really doesn't work to have a meeting that night.
Oh, we don't have a meeting usually that night, we just have it, we have it during the day.
Right, we have the organizational meeting, you know, like, did you know this, the last...
I think, I think last year we canceled the night meeting.
We did.
So, let's take that off.
Two years ago.
Two years ago, there wasn't any inauguration.
No, when the mayor, right, and this year it is, so we don't need a meeting that night, because we do it during the day.
So, is it like a weekly following swearing-in, kinds of thing?
Right, yes.
On the 2nd?
Well, it's, it's got to be quick.
Yeah, but it's like right after the swearing-in, right?
So, we take that right off the calendar?
No, leave it on, leave it on, but as, we mark it as inauguration, and, you know, because you have to, you have to post it.
Well, you take the time off.
Right.
Well, I can just write immediately following inauguration, it's usually what I would do on posting, yes, for that time of the day.
So, would you propose to have maybe the organization meeting as part of the retreat?
Because I think by trying to, we're supposed to organize that same day.
Yeah, all right, okay.
So, then we have to...
I can tell you everything?
Well, I think it's just a chair, maybe underfaced, then we have to go to the chair, check. Have a nice chair.
Hopefully.
We won't be voting on the chair.
Oh, sorry, that was a bloody statement.
Believe that for the minutes.
Yeah, don't write that down.
So, other than that change, and the change of the retreat?
Um, no, I'm going to ask another question, please. We did have a budget hearing, Mr. Cole, you can correct my language, I think it was in January, as a, like a precursor. I, I guess, I don't like the fact that the public hearing is April 2nd. I think we need a meeting as we had this year, I can't, I don't know where it is, but...
It would be in the morning.
It is Saturday morning.
Yes.
A forum, not a hearing.
It was a forum, it wasn't really...
Public hearing is law, whatever.
Right, yeah, we have to have that by law.
But you would like to do more of a public input and...
We'll have one of this, one of these school committee meetings, just say it's a, it's a, you know, preliminary budget presentation is on the agenda.
So, do you want to have it on January 16th?
No, we won't have House One budget yet, I think we should February 5th. Because by then you'd have a little more information from the leadership team, we'd know what House One budget is, and how much locally we're losing next year.
I shouldn't laugh.
So, what would you call it, Mr. Cole, if it's during our regular meeting, a budget forum, a hearing of...
I, I don't think we need to call it anything yet, until we decide what the agenda is.
But we know that that's going to be a budget meeting, we totally voted to do that.
But I think it's good to think ahead like that.
All right, shall we pick a vote?
Is this a first reading, or is this the first vote?
First reading.
Okay. Yes, could I hear a motion, please?
Whoa, in a second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously?
Yes.
Now, just... Now, Superintendent Dennis?
I put information in your packet regarding the youth intervention grant that we have received, and just wanted to enter that, I wanted to talk a little bit about that. This really is focused on our upper elementary and middle school in terms of the curriculum offerings that we have in our wellness department, and being able to provide more information to our students, and really looking at what we're doing from a curriculum standpoint. We have, the money that the grant brings forward is used for a couple of things. One, it will provide substitutes so that we can train our teachers, and it also provides some curriculum materials to us as well. And this is, my understanding is that this is going back to a particular curriculum that we've used in the past, correct?
Correct. Yes. And we're going to really start with the implementation at the middle school level. We've got some focus areas, this, this is an All-Stars curriculum, it's, it's been updated, it starts with some core content at grade six, and it builds grade seven and eight from there, and then we will be looking at how the elements, the way they're recommended, will work for our upper elementary at grades four and five. So, that would be kind of phase two of the implementation of all of this. But Jane Murphy, our teacher of the wellness program at that level, is really looking at the curriculum, aligning some of the elements from the curriculum that we have with the elements from the All-Star, and we're seeing how they work together to really boost this aspect of the work we're doing in the wellness curriculum.
Do we have All-Star in grade four and five currently?
No. We, we don't. We are using a health wave curriculum, we use, we actually don't use, we have our own curriculum that's based on standards, and we use a variety of resources just to teach.
And does it address opioids in the fourth and fifth grade?
It addresses decision-making, substance abuse, not necessarily opioid. So, we're looking at what All-Stars has to offer, and how we're going to figure that out. Right now, the recommendation from All-Stars is that it's integrated into the content area in the classroom, that, and it has a lot of lessons that are expected to be taught, say, during a science class or during a literacy class. We've been working with All-Stars to say that that seems a little bit problematic when you already have a full year of curriculum already established within those content areas. They're hearing the same thing from other school districts around the state. So, we're currently working to realign that, to see how it can be taught in the wellness class, what pieces make sense perhaps to do during the morning meeting, during responsive classroom time, or things like that. There may be elements that can go in different places. So, that's why that's going to be phase two, because we're working with All-Stars right now to try to better align that in a way that makes sense with the way the whole curriculum is being taught at those levels, so, that works underway.
I just know it's beginning for kids younger in the younger end.
Yeah, it will, they will definitely get it early in those grades, it's just where it's going to happen, and where it makes the most sense.
Okay. So, the grant's being used for substitutes and for support of stuff?
The grant, it's basically being used for, for the materials as well as the professional development.
And where would that occur, and who would run?
All-Stars program, the publishers of the All-Stars material are the ones who are handling the professional development, yes.
And who would be, who would attend that?
Well, our, our first level, what we've done is look at our wellness teaching as well as some of the counselors that are working with students around this, and we've opened it to classroom teachers that would also be interested, that have a particular interest. But at the middle school level, this will all be taught in the wellness class, however, it's important that everybody understands. And all of the professional development is a train-to-trainer model, so that you train a few people in your building, then are then able to train others moving forward.
Any other questions about that? Thank you.
So, I put in, in your packet, just, I gave you a copy of, in looking at our, we had provided you with a technology plan at a previous school committee meeting, and wanted to give you an idea of some of the things that we're looking to do specifically next year. And, for example, between now and the end of the year, we are administering the loading survey, that's happening as we speak at faculty meetings between now and the end of the school year, so that we get a handle on how technologically savvy are our staff. So, I just, I provided you with, as, as this is a proposal for what we're looking at, for next, this is really the thoughts of the technology committee, but I wanted to keep the school committee up to date. So, you see that there are some question marks there, we're still talking about some other things, but I wanted to give you an idea of, it's a pretty ambitious plan for next year, we have a lot that we want to get done, and I just wanted to sort of update you that this is our next plan, and I wanted you to be able to give us some feedback and ask some specific questions, and you certainly don't have to do it tonight, but I, I'm willing to, to hear what your thoughts are on what we're trying to, what we're trying to attempt to do for next year. It's a lot, I will tell you that.
It's ambitious, absolutely.
It's very ambitious.
Did you take out goal four for some reason, or you decided to do goal four?
Uh, no. We just weren't going to focus on it for next year, and I don't remember.
We're identifying which ones we're tackling first, and we may not have had...
Oh, it's missing, it's numerically missing, that's all, one, two, three, five.
Right, because we're not, right, because we're not going to focus on goal four for next year.
Let me figure that, I just wanted to ask. And do we have enough money in the budget to do all this? Do we, is our, do we vote appropriately for this?
One of the things that we are, that we are talking about is really planning for a one-to-one initiative at the middle school level, and looking at the sixth grade. And one of the things that we, you know, that we are fortunate that we have access to is that, again, I would just remind you that the building committee, in their wisdom for both Knock Mall and for Presley, and put money aside for technology replacement. So, so we're looking to look at what that, what that initiative could be for students, and we are looking at assessing what that will look like, so we expect that we're going to have a...
It's year two.
Yep. It's year three next year.
Next year.
It's next, it's year three next year.
Well, the reason I was...
Time flies, mayor, all day.
Yeah, it sure does. Reason I was asking is I noticed step one add point, point eight stem position to the breast, and we voted that, so we funded it.
Yes, so, so this was, again, this was our planning, so this has happened, so this was planning.
No, that's all I'm asking, is you have, we, we planned the budget accordingly, right?
Yes, with the goals that are here.
That's what I'm saying.
So, for example, under goal five, one of the things that, that is a really important piece there, if you see, develop a timeline for updating the high school projectors and the cable, and it has to occur there, we have to really plan that out and look at what that is going to look like, what's, what's the timing on that, what's the, what's going to be the cost for that? Teacher stations across the district. I mean, knock on wood, one of the things that we're really fortunate with is that our Surface Pros that people are using are holding up really well, and we've had pretty limited issues with them, they're working, but also Chromebooks are also pretty phenomenal, and they're pretty solid in terms of, they haven't had to have a lot of repairs, the repairs to them, when they had to be repaired, are like $50, so that's been great. So, we are, I mean, we've had a lot of conversation around the fact that we're probably not going to be replacing our Surface Pros necessarily with Surface Pros in the future, but maybe we can replace them with Chromebooks, which are so much less expensive. So, we're really looking at what the alternatives are, and obviously, you know, technology is, it's getting much more cost-effective as we move forward, and we're going to have a lot more alternatives available to us, so...
Well, really, we're trying to spend the time to evaluate what individual teachers' needs are, you know, there may be some teachers that it's a device like a Surface Pro is really essential for the job that they have. We might, though, for a lot of our teachers, having a desktop and a Chromebook that would be a portable device could work just as easily, and we might get more time out of the desktop as the stationery unit in every classroom, because one of the issues we faced is when a teacher is absent and their Surface Pro is with them, the substitute that comes in has no technology in the room. So, we've had to supplement with other Surface Pros that we buy, that we get just for the substitute, so that they're able to log on, because there's just an empty dock, you know, when they come in. So, we're just looking at, we're, we're learning more about the technology all the time, and we're really examining what are the best decisions, and, but you do want to have some kind of consistency from classroom to classroom, so that you're assuring.
So, I, I just wanted you to, to be aware that this is a, this is a proposal, I mean, we're tweaking it all the time, we'll be tweaking it as it goes on. For example, when we planned this, at that time, we did not have the, this was done before the STEM positions were in the budget, so, again, what you're seeing...
Well, it's complementary.
And, and so, it is definitely a work in progress, but we really, I wanted you to be aware that we are, that we do have an ambitious plan for next year, and, you know, I welcome you to really take a look at this and get back to Angela and myself with any specific questions, and I'll bring it back to the technology team. Thank you. And then the, the last thing that was our line, Superintendent Dennis' report, is that I provided you with information on the water for the South Sudan project, and just that we were able to add a second well, and I think that that is pretty amazing, for that our students have been able to do that, and I wanted to share that with you, because I...
It's great.
It is great.
It is great. In two years in a row.
So, I thought it was important.
Can we get that picture posted on the website?
We certainly can, Kathy, right?
Yeah, well, if I have the picture, picture, what, you had, you just gave me the hard copy.
Yeah.
If I could get a...
We can get that too.
It was a letter, but I think the letter's really nice, too.
A letter, a letter?
Yeah.
I think it's just nice for our community to know what they did.
Yes, absolutely.
So, great. Dave, you can have this on our Facebook page, our school committee Facebook page.
Absolutely.
This is good stuff. All right, Assistant Superintendent Dennis' report?
I just wanted to let you know that we've received a lot of proposals from teachers that are looking to work on summer curriculum projects. I just read probably, I think, a good 15 different summer curriculum proposals, so it's pretty exciting, and the teachers are motivated and have some great... are motivated and have some great ideas. I think some of the proposals that we received this year definitely reflect the work that the teachers did in their professional learning communities throughout the year, in thinking about how we'd like to reimagine teaching and learning, or how to create safe and supportive schools. So it's exciting. There's really good work. Because the Swayze Foundation was so generous this year, we'll be able to fund all of the summer curriculum projects, so we're really excited about that.
And are we involved in that? I read it in the paper. I know there's a place where you can sign up during the summer if they need breakfast or lunch. Are we involved in that as a city?
We sent that. Yes, we did send that out. Kathy, mainly, was the lead on that. That was through my neighbor's table.
Yes.
Our neighbor's table, yeah.
So are you collecting...
I've done it the last couple of years.
So are you collecting the names?
No, they're most directly to...
Oh, all right. Okay, okay.
And Nancy Earle also brings hard copies and distributes some to her area.
I didn't know how it was publicized, that's all, because it's just such a...
I've read it.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
But it is a great thing.
Thank you. Are there any subcommittee reports? Joinin did not meet this evening. Finance?
We're up to date. We haven't met. Next meeting will be, as scheduled, probably mid-June.
Policy, any other updates? You've been very busy. I think I've heard enough from you this evening, but I didn't want to...
Be glutton for punishment.
Thank you. Moving on. Curriculum instruction, expectations.
I hadn't met. Our next meeting is scheduled to the end of June. I'm wondering if it's possible to move that to the day of next school committee meeting, 19? 19?
I'll move on for a second. Superintendent's evaluation. Please remember your deadline to Mr. DeCandre is June 12th, so that he can turn the information around for a meeting on the 19th. So you all have the document, email, the template, and we're going to keep it the way it is, because it's just easier for everyone to manage word. We're looking just specifically for the indicator grades at this point, because that's what we need to send in to the state. As I've stated before, the superintendent has asked for us to give her some focus areas to work on. So I was thinking that that may be part of our agenda for our retreat, just to talk about those, flush them out a little bit. So the 19th, please get in till noon, 5:12. Any questions? Everybody's got the form. Okay, thank you. Later start time stakeholders, we're done. Could I hear a motion to adjourn, or was someone has anything else? Mayor?
We just wanted to let everyone know that the FY18 budget before, we're coming out of committee. We finished on the review on June 12th, that same day, at a traditional school, city council meeting at 7:30, and anticipate that they will vote the FY18 budget that night.
Any NEF... Oh, Mr. Bennett?
We can go NEF first.
NEF, any NEF update?
Uh, NEF update.
Do we know how much the auction made? Did we ever get that figure, that figure?
The auction was, yeah, last fall.
No, what am I thinking? Golf tournament. I'm very sorry.
Golf tournament. We made twenty-something. It was just below our budget, very close to our budget, though. So great turnout, great volunteers, even though it was a rainy day.
It was raining.
Miserable day. So, yeah, they did pretty well. As you know, they've received a very generous grant again, so we can accelerate the completion of the high school auditorium, which means that all of our fundraising going forward can be focused on that. So it's very, very exciting, both to complete the auditorium and to move forward with it. Can't say enough for Megan. She's done a fabulous job leading the NEF, and we're going to miss her as Patty takes over. But I think she'll do a great job as well.
And just to remind everybody, NEF partnership grant, display and annual meeting and Ed Awards is Wednesday, 14.
14. Please be there. It is very important for us as a school committee to show the same kind of support that the NEF, that they have shown to us. It is at, by 3:00 or 6:00 o'clock in the afternoon.
6:30.
6:30. You all have received invitations, both digitally and...
And it's in the Phoenix Room this year.
Yes, it's in the Phoenix Room. Again, please be there. It really means a lot to the NEF to see us show up and say, "We care enough about you guys and what you do for us." And we'll show up at your event.
Thank you. Mr. Bennett?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that Mr. Cole and I last night had privilege, and was privileged, indeed, of chaperoning the senior celebration, among a number of other chaperones. And I have to say, the kids were terrific and polite and respectful, not only to the chaperones, but to the venues that we attended. It was a blast. It was a lot of fun. And the kids were just great. They were great.
Oh, that's great.
And NYU staff did a good job being there, too.
Right. We're giving shout-outs. Our graduation was great, and from what I understand, it's DC trip to Northwood. Really well. Okay, great. Thanks a lot.
What are we doing now, this year's appointment?
Oh, the vacation.
I forwarded the information to you.
It's on the agenda now, so...
So to put it on the next agenda. I mean, what would you like to have happen? Do you want to have people... Do you want to invite this four people? I don't know how we... We haven't had this probably before.
Whittier.
We have vacancy on the Whittier school.
And there's four people. I forwarded the information to you.
One of them, didn't they have a resume, though?
She... I actually had some communication with her. She was going to forward something.
All right. So we'll at least have all the information. So I guess the question is, do people want those four nominee... Those people who are interested to come to our meeting to present?
I mean, it's volunteer, it's...
But it's our vote. We have to vote on one draft.
I would find it helpful to at least have a...
To see enough?
To see them, and have each one give us a two-minute...
Three-minute, yeah.
Why I want this position.
We've done a before. We had to fill, you know, Mark Lukens' position. We did a roll call vote in front of him. I mean, we thought, Steve, you're joining for the first time, telling a vacancy. We did it in a roll call vote. It happens. So we have to do it.
So could you invite them to me, and maybe we could do them first, because also I've asked Susan and Angela to put an update, just what's going on with the strategic plan this year. And, you know, not that they're finished, but just I think we want to hear some progress being made. And I think, I don't know when you choose what you're going to do with the goals for next year, or you wait till the beginning of the year, whatever. But I think the public needs to know what's happening with the strategic plan. So... Is there anything else anyone has for the agenda on the 19th?
Is there? I know the lady talked about the foreign language class going into the middle school. Lisa said they were scheduling committee, working on a schedule, and how that was going to fit into the whole plan. Is there any progress, like is the Knox schedule changing next year?
They have... They are considering some changes, so why don't we...
Can we hear about that curriculum? Is there possibly an update from that curriculum?
Accurate, I'll be sure. We had timing about that, but this is really internal, specific to...
No, I just wanted to make that clarity. It's not that we're changing it to 9:00 to 5:00.
It's tweaked to the schedule itself.
Putting a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Discussion? Wait, let's have a discussion.
Anybody you want.
What do I choose for the second?
If anybody you want, go back and read the tape.
All of those, all those in favor?
Bye, goodnight.
Since you're all getting up, I thought I knew the answer.